We'll call the meeting in order. Roll call.
Okay, Mayor Westgar.
Yep.
Boltman.
Here.
Cleveland.
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Huss.
Here.
Stankin?
Here.
Okay, no public forum, we'll move on to consent agenda. Additions, corrections?
Just that the two additional building, excuse me, all of the building permits are approved, including that Dean Rain.
Have a motion to approve?
And you saw the two additional ones which would be included in the building, in the consent agenda, awesome.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Stankin?
Yes.
Huss?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Boltman?
Yes. Okay, Jim Scott, would you like to address the council?
I would, thank you. Scott, did you make copies of what I handed up to you?
Yes, they have the state code section and then the proposed sign is in the memo.
Well, you know, boats, just like cars, are supposed to be muffled. And there's a few on the lake that don't follow that. And I propose that a sign go up in Town Bay by the boat ramp stating what I've put on the sign, that it's illegal. And hopefully, a lot of people, I think, don't realize that. And a couple of loud boats that I've talked to, they said, "Oh, Okoboji's got a sign. I thought it was okay here because there's no sign." And I talked with Kirby Blair, the new DNR law enforcement guy for the lake. And he approves of the sign. He said he's gonna talk to his lake patrol so that they start issuing citations or warnings at least to enforce the ordinance when they're around, but they're over. And he said that Town Bay, he thought, would be a city jurisdiction. And he said the red tape that the state has to go through, they have to let bids, they have to have prison industries make the sign. He said it's an unbelievably big deal for them to put one in at 30 acres. He said, "Why don't you see if the city would put one in in Town Bay?" So that's why I'm here.
What's the cost of a sign?
I don't know. I can't be too much, I wouldn't pay.
I'd estimate a hundred bucks, probably, for a custom sign.
My thought is, every time we do anything with the DNR, they'll tell us, remind us every time, it's their lake, they'll do what they want.
Well, this is one of the rare occasions where, maybe because he's a new guy, he hasn't learned that.
He may not have been beat down, but he will be. They'll hit him.
But just like, you know, you're designing, "No wake in Town Bay," you know, it's something simple. I think that most of the boats, I don't know if you know, notice there, I think they're weekenders that come in from out of town. And it's just foolishness. There's no need to have a hot rod cutout boat drowning out everyone else. And it's illegal. And they should know that.
We put up a sign, we couldn't enforce it anyway.
No, the city won't be expected to enforce it. It'd be up to either DNR or, as a citizen, I might file a complaint every now and then with county attorney and turn somebody in. But it wouldn't be any extra burden on the city, other than the sign.
A sign.
It'd be nice if they could put the sign as you was going out of the bay. Because that, you know, it's a no-wake in that. You don't get much noise in the bay, right?
No, but, you know, I live about halfway between the buoys and Edison Beach. So everybody opens it up right about in front of my plaza. And, you know, the cutouts are simple. I think everybody's familiar with them. They just, rather than put the exhaust out of the water, they cut it out into the open air.
You know, putting one sign in the bay, if we got three other places they could put it in, they'd say, "I never saw the sign."
Well...
You know, I just find it troubling for us to get in the middle of a DNR thing. That's what I think. Up to the council, but I think it's a stretch for us, you know. I sympathize with you, because when I was young, I had headers too. And now I don't care for them.
Well, it's something we could check into, probably, and make a decision on.
Have we had any other complaints?
No. You know, really, I guess personally, you notice these things, that you may hear a loud boat from downtown. I didn't realize, I'd be one of the guys who didn't know it's illegal.
There's usually one boat. It's yellow and white. I don't know who it is, but...
And that's the, that's the one that comes to mind, you know.
Gus, is that you?
No, I got electric motor.
But they got a new DNR boat out there that go after violators. I would think that they could figure that out, if there's a yellow and white boat, they could do that, couldn't they, or?
Well, I've called them and they say, you know, unless we observe it, then they patrol about two hours a week.
Yep.
Signs are like suggestions, just like when you go down the highway, it says 60 mile an hour. Until I get caught, I'm not driving 60 mile an hour. I mean, I'm not trying to be facetious here, but the only way you're gonna get stopped is somebody gets a ticket, and that gets around faster than anybody. And that's, that's something that DNR needs to focus on more than the city has to. That's my opinion.
I mean, the Town Bay or the whole lake in itself is DNR jurisdiction, you know. The Town Bay, I don't think is our jurisdiction. The land part is our jurisdiction, but the lake part in itself, the water part...
Yeah, so as you hit high watermark, everything from then on down is DNR.
That's all DNRs. I would like to see the DNR and us discuss it together and try and come up with a solution. Whether, you know, if we know it's a yellow and white boat, you know, pinpoint whose it is and, you know, maybe send them a notice warning, or if we could, or something, or whatever. And also, you know, discuss with them, you know, the possibility of a sign.
I agree with Kenny. You're gonna have to write a, maybe write a ticket or a warning or two, and then that's the only way you're gonna take care of it.
The DNR will have to decide that.
Does it seem, Jim, like, like it's the same boats?
Yeah, I could probably pick out the ones. There's a half a dozen. The yellow one, one is most common. There's another, there was one the other night, though. At midnight, you know, woke us up, tearing up now the lake. And the problem with DNR is it's, they're just out on the lake enough.
Right, right.
Yeah. They're supposed to be out there so many hours.
There, I mean, and then the other thing, does it have to be a, somebody, DNR law enforcement, DNR guy, that catches them?
Well, I...
Or could it be what, like?
Any of us can issue a, sign a complaint, that...
Right. But if they need to witness it or something?
Yeah, they need to witness it if they're going to.
So, so could it be one of the other DNR workers? I'm thinking of the guys that patrol 30 acres.
I think it could be. Yeah.
Well, yeah, I plan on taking a picture with my iPhone and getting the registration number and talking to county attorney in front of the complaint. And I'm semi-retired, I'll go to court and testify.
Well, even with cars today on the highway, you hear more and more, like on the scanner, with these cell phones, they call in, as long as they call in that number, they go after them, I mean, but they don't always catch them.
No, they gotta make their own case.
But, you know, no, we aren't supposed to post every state law before it's enforced. I mean, you know, people that think that, it's crazy. But at least, I don't know if it was yellow and white one. It might have been another guy I talked to in Town Bay last year, I just said, "You know, those are illegal." And he said, "Well, there's no sign, and maybe they are in Okoboji, but they're fine here." And it's just, you know, irritating. And I think we could get a little benefit out of the sign. Because waiting for more lake patrol, we're gonna wait a long time.
What, you know, if you put up a sign, DNR's gotta approve what you put on there, though, wouldn't it? Because it's...
They've already approved the one I'm proposing.
Well, we got a lady by the lake put up a sign that says, "No bicycles." I don't know why you can't put your own sign up.
Well, I can do that. Well, if you show me to make it and to put it in Town Bay, I'll do that.
Well, I'm not telling you to do anything. I'm just telling you, I sympathize with your problem, but I don't think the city wants to get anywhere close to touching DNR. We already have a little, we've had a history with them.
Well, I think, you know, maybe it's something that we could work with the DNR on and visit with them about it.
I could have Kirby call you up if you want, you know.
I think that DNR's just saying that they have to go through so much red tape to put the sign up.
Yeah, it'd be easier for the city.
But if you call the DNR every day in Des Moines, they'll get tired of it and do that a lot quicker.
Well...
I would think, I just...
I'd just like a more peaceful lake. We do all this effort to clean up the water and to make downtown look nice, and this noise of aim goes unavated.
Well, our job here is to bring tourists into town, not to chase them away with the tickets. That's DNR's job.
Well, you're bringing in some hot rod guys that, you know, can't do it anywhere else, and they think that this is the Wild West on Black Hawk.
Well, I mean, it's not that we chase them away with the ticket, you know, and Jimmy mentioned it at the beginning, you know, warn them or something, you know, and if they continue to break the law, they're gonna need a ticket. I mean, that's, goes with the city also. I mean, we can't turn our, turn our head every time somebody's breaking the law and not give them a ticket.
I think we're afraid, then we just will, well, like I said, take the stops, let them down, nobody wants to enforce it anyway.
So I, I think the bottom line is, you know, and I'd be more than happy to do that, go talk to that new guy, I met him once, and see if we can come up with something and, you know. If it's just a wooden sign and put the words on the wooden sign with a router and then paint it, I'd be more than happy to do that. I mean, that's gonna cost five bucks.
I think we could probably afford metal signs if it were to be built at this extent.
If we, we would want, certainly want a high-quality sign down there, something that lasts for a while.
Are you saying I don't have the talent to do that?
That's what I'm...
But I mean...
I think what Jim's probably saying is, you have somebody who comes into town, doesn't pay the taxes that he pays and buys in town that they do, and so he's just wanting the city to put a sign up, not enforce it, because we can't.
But, and it's gonna have to be a sign that the DNR... It'd have to be a sign that the DNR approves also.
And he said that they...
Right. Every time he approves of the word, the language on the sign...
So how big are you talking?
I don't know, big enough to read from...
Well, it wouldn't have to be just a...
Just on the first post of a dock or something.
People, I'm thinking right by the boat ramp, you know, you walk right by it.
I mean, there's hardly, there's no effort, but, you know, I'd still like to have something in writing from the DNR saying that this is okay to do.
Well, I could talk to Kirby and tell him to get a letter off to bring to the mayor's attention or...
I mean, it's hard to tell, some guy that up here pays taxes, doesn't have a boat, and he's gonna use his tax money to buy a sign. I just think...
I'll pay the hundred bucks.
Well, if you buy the sign, I don't have any problem with that. I just don't wanna use taxpayers' money.
Send the bill to me.
Well, I, yeah, I, I don't even think it'd cost a hundred bucks, to tell you the truth, but...
Let's get, let's get, work with, we gotta do this with the DNR's blessing.
Blessing.
Get, coordinate that, first of all, and see where we're at there, and then find out what their timeframe is, if that's, if that's what they really want to put up, and they're willing to put up. He might be willing to put it up, but there might be somebody in Des Moines that might not want it, so I'm...
And being, being a hundred bucks or less might be in the slush fund, go ahead and do it. I mean...
We'll have Scott call the DNR and see if we can work something out.
Okay, sounds, sounds good. I appreciate your attention to this issue and getting it on the agenda right away. Thank you. Have a good night.
Resolution 1512, a water tower estimate?
Yeah, these are just a couple of resolutions then on, on the water tower. The first one is the resolution that approves the final plans and specs and form a contract. This is a procedural thing, oftentimes done after the public hearing. We just didn't do it at the last one, but again, really a procedural thing to finally approve the, the plans and specs.
Have a motion on 1512. Second? Roll call.
Boltman?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Huss?
Yes.
Stankin?
Okay, and 1513 is awarding the contract.
This is, yeah, it finalizes the contract on that. We do have the signed contract back from K&amp;W. Everything is, is in order. They've got their, all their bonds and insurance came back also. Everything's fine.
Got the dictionary with them and everything, huh? So moved. Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Boltman?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Huss?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Okay, pay estimates for the bathhouse?
Yep.
What happened down there with the rafters?
We got that all taken care of.
I knew about it too.
Did it fall over? Now they weren't quite, but the conversation we had with the engineer early on, it didn't come out quite right, covers the block. Lon can tell everybody what the, so we're just gonna make it right. Now...
Basically, what they ordered the rafters, the story I got was to make the raptor strong enough, this has come from Dean Potbom, that's what the raptor guy said they had to do. And of course, then Dean says to me, he says, "I don't know that I believe that line, but it is what it is. If you look at the top on the end of the building, that smooth-faced block wasn't supposed to be there." Well, we'd gone through that problem, fixed that, because the rafters would have come down to that level anyway. Well, now they don't, well... And today, we decided to put 15 inches out there, put a two-by-eight down, and it's gonna come over and it's gonna hit that bottom of that block like it's supposed to. And they're already nailed on there.
So it's fixed?
Well, it's gonna cost you a little bit of money, but I'm working with them guys on a deal, because I'm letting them... The engineer had it where there was a two-by-six, then there was a two-by-eight with a little notch, so that would bring you down an inch and a half. Well, then they had to wrap tin back up around that. And anybody that builds a house now, they put a two-by-six out there, or two-by-eight, what have you, bring their tin down, and that covers the bottom of the soffit. It's a nice, clean look, looks right. And I said, "Well, let's just take them one-bys off there, we'll do a deduct for that, and then we'll work something out on this extra-long tail on that, because it's gonna take more soffit and stuff, and we'll just have to work something out." Then on this end, you'll see that raptor leaning up against the wall, you guys look to take a picture? Okay. There's supposed to be a stud wall there. Well, they ordered this raptor made that way. And this engineer, in his infinite wisdom, thought he had to have a bent on the end of this building. So, the reason he was studding it up is because you, if you look up at an angle, you may be able to see that raptor in there. Well, we're gonna let them do that. We're gonna let them put this raptor up in there. We signed that today. They screwed it up in place, put their overhang on. Rather than doing a stud wall there, it doesn't need to be a stud wall. I mean, it could be this raptor. And they're gonna paint that raptor black. That way, when you look up there, because it'll be dark up in there and you shouldn't see it. So, these louver deals are gonna come back to haunt us anyway, because when, when I was bidding on this thing, Randy boosted, he was gonna be my carpenter on the project, and, and he told me, "You don't want them," because he said, "We put them in a house and we had to go take them back out, because the snow blows up in there." I said that to the engineer, he said, "Oh, it won't be a problem." I said, "Okay, I'm just telling you." So they could have put a ridge van up there for $200 instead of $10,000 for them stupid louvers, but, you know. But it is what it is, so...
As we were talking with the rafter manufacturer, he, he was at least going through and really explaining why things are the way they are. And it has to do with, with the fact that we wanted this thing to basically double as a storm shelter. And they're just beefed up to the nth degree, you know, way more than what you would ever see before.
But if you look at the architectural drawing, the architectural drawing has a raging raptor, so... There's only nine foot span in there, guys. That's the biggest span in that building, is nine foot, so...
So the change order itself is 2,000 bucks?
I don't think we know what that, oh.
Is that what this is?
No, this, this is the pay estimate, yeah. That's the, that's the first two that we've approved so far.
We narrowed it down along the side of the gap, and we went out 15 more inches, and we're gonna have, still come down with two by eight to get it to the bottom of that block. The whole, since we started this project, we told that engineer, you know, that, because we ran into this problem when they did the, the bath out, or the shower house and the well building in Speaker Park. And if you look at that, the soffit goes up, because they put that rough-faced block there. So we knew it was a problem, so he put the smooth-faced block, and that's what I asked for, was a smooth-faced block, and then the, and it was, it would come down perfect, it would have fit perfect, till they made the rafters this way. And that screwed up the whole plan.
Well, it looks like it was able to be fixed.
Yeah, but...
Yeah, I think it's gonna be all right. It's gonna be close. It's gonna be within half an inch, I think, now, so...
If I was engineering, I wouldn't be able to come within a half an inch.
Well, if I could order the rafters, they'd have been right. It'd work.
So we don't have any change order prices?
Not on, not on that one. There's a second change order, but, yeah, pay, pay estimate. Let's take a look at page 11, and that really tells you what it is for this time. You look at column E, that tells you what you'd be paying for this time. It's the other half of mobilization. All of the testing is the, is the concrete testing and the fill material testing. Paid for the remainder of the concrete, paid for all of the masonry, and a little bit of the carpentry, another 7,000 on rough plumbing, 6,000 on the electric rough end, and then paying for those two change orders which were approved last month. Total amount for, for this month is that 63, 561. There's a retainage. There's a retainage on that, it's 5%. And total then, to be paid this month, 60,382.95.
Is that the price, just the cement, at 29,000?
Yes.
It's a 16-inch slab of solid concrete. Could have got by with half that.
To me, I would have thought they could have built a foundation cheaper.
16 inches. 16 inches thick. But, you know, it's...
You're in water.
So now they think they'll just float, huh?
That's what it's gonna do. It's gonna let the whole building...
The, the building will be strong and stand there forever.
Go as hard, it'll be floating out in the lake.
There you go. Well, you know, they gotta know if it's gonna work, they are.
So far, he hasn't convinced me that he's done a good job of engineering it. All these little things that come up, shouldn't have them.
J.O.
We'll just remember that the next time.
Yeah. Not a lot we can do about it right now.
No, no, you know. And I, this is just a word of caution to you, because we don't have them doing a contract administration. So, you know, we, if there's any issues to be caught along the way, they're not there to do it. And this rafter issue then came up only after the fact, so... It saves us some money on contract administration and construction administration from them, but ends up costing us some too.
They had a big crane down there, and I seen it down there, and then I went and stopped down there one day, and they was, crane was gone, and they was lifting the rest of the rafters up when they got the okay.
Yep.
They're doing it by hand, I thought, "My God, they have the crane here."
Well, it just takes a while to get things straightened out. We need a motion on estimate number two.
Yep, motion on estimate number two.
I'm making a motion.
Second? Roll call.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Huss?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Boltman?
Yes.
I mean, you made a motion on change order number three?
Change order number three is some concrete between the south sidewalk and the parking area. It widens that parking area a little bit, is what it does. The building's relocated a few feet to the north.
What page is that on?
12.
Oh, okay. You almost had to do that.
Yep. Yep. You have a motion on change order number three?
Yes.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Huss?
Yes.
Boltman?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Stankin?
Okay, we're asking the council to approve a street closing for a little while for the dedication on the 4th of July.
July 4th, closing Third Street by Speaker Park from 12:30 to about 4:00.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Boltman?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Huss?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
City administrative report?
A few things for you. That Hometown Pride program, we're getting involved with that now. We have our local committee meeting is Wednesday night, and we have a, a committee of 10 people, plus the mayor and I, and we'll get together and just kinda have a little kickoff and introduction to what they're going to be doing. But then we have a county-wide Hometown Pride meeting, and that is Thursday, June 11th, so a week from Thursday. And this is over at Odebot at the community center, and they would like each of the communities to bring their Hometown Pride committees and their mayor and council.
What time?
That's 7 o'clock.
I won't be there.
We'll take notes.
Take notes from it. I'll be in Florida.
Oh, that's right, yeah. So if you can keep that open, hopefully we can get a good response. It's golf night, Gus.
What's the matter with these people? That's at what time?
7:00.
After last week, when I missed, why?
What'd you miss last week?
I had to go to a funeral.
We could send out a reminder email just before that, couldn't we?
We certainly could.
We got my nephew to golf for me, and he shot 3 under par, or 200 par. It was 3 under par. It was a 33, I think.
You're right, they won't watch you that.
You don't drink beer.
That's why he went under par.
I'd be under the bar if I drank.
I wouldn't be.
That would have been fun to watch, though, see somebody shoot 3 under.
That's a course record, isn't it?
No, he's gotta go, I think it's 32.
Jeff Sharp's got a 31 out there.
A 31?
Yeah. That's what's posted on the wall.
Jesus. I've got that after 3. That's not full top.
And then men quit, so you're...
Yeah, that's not full top. What's the big deal?[1646.82][1646.85][laughter]
I thought you meant 3 beers and something.
Well, that too. 3 beers and 3 holes.
That's par for golfing, in league golf. Beer hole, that's what it's about.
There you go. Just an FYI, that, that the Historic Preservation Commission and the Park Board had a joint meeting last night. And the purpose of this meeting was to discuss Chief Blackhawk, and the Historic Preservation Commission would like to do some enhancements to the chief at the site. And their initial discussion was probably move the fence so that you have some accessibility and openness from the street, some lighting, and basically some benches, and they're just looking at similar benches like we have along the shoreline, those concrete Bowman benches, and, and some raised planters. You know, that was their initial idea on that. Not, not having any real plans exactly how it would come together, but they're, they're getting together again on Thursday down there at the site to talk this through some more. So Ruth was there to always express her concern about the use of that land, because they do use that as, then as overflow parking area. So wanna be cognizant of that.
Just a reminder on that, in April, Lon came up and says, "Don't give me any more projects this year, I can't do it." So if they got a deal, it's not gonna happen until next year, there's no, nothing in the budget, so... And we're not gonna give Lon one more project.
Was he retired, or what?
I know, we need him more than he needs us.
Don't say that, God, don't say that.
Be careful now. Another thing, Lon's done a really good job watching the bathhouse every day, plus getting everything else done. He deserves a thank you. I've been there many times and he's there, so doing all he can.
Keep giving him hell, buddy. Sounds like they need it once in a while.
This thing in your building permit packet was a request from one of these card companies, you know, what do you call them, discount card companies? That the Cub Scout PAC is getting together a, a discount card, and asked whether the city, they were referred to the city by somebody, about would we give discount... and asked whether the city, they were referred to the city by somebody, about would we give discount on mini golf. You know, something like free kids round with a, with an adult round or something like that. Now, having said that, I discussed this with Ruth, and she's, she's not at all a big of that.
Ask her if she wants some more lifeguards.
She does not.
You know, so, yeah, I guess what's, what's your choi- uh, what's your input on that with her? Yeah, it's nice to support the community organization, but, any ideas?
So what do they actually want, they want?
We would design the promotion that we would do, but it's something mini golf related. That if it was, say, it, that it would be, um, free, free child's round with a, with an adult round purchase. And have some sort of limited amount of how many times you can use it.
How, how, how would you keep track of it?
Well, if it's like this one, you know, whether it's, uh, you punch it.
It'd be like football players always sell these cards.
It's a twenty dollar donation that you never use.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, the number of people that would use it would probably be like ten percent or, you know, something like that.
You know what, I used mine.
You're one of my ones.
Packet they come around with.
Okay.
And used it on the motel down there in Des Moines.
Really?
And it, they said, yeah, we honor that. Boulders? No. It was down in Des Moines, uh, I can't remember the name of the motel, but, yeah, that, they had different places, I mean, it is in state towns around here.
But they, how many of them they think they sell?
I don't know.
Well, a lot of times they do, but the football boys, they do that every, and I, this year we happened to buy two, they nabbed me, and then they nabbed Joy up at, uh, drug, we didn't, you know, and we didn't use either one of them. You know, you just don't use, you know, what do you do with them? It's just a money maker for the kids, is what it is. I think it'd be alright to do that myself, for the Cub Scout, I tell you, that's a good organization for these young guys. I'd like to make a motion that we would, uh, go ahead, it ain't gonna cost the city, is it?
Um, just foregoing that round of golf, maybe that they were gonna play anyway, but.
And you're maybe gonna.
Hard to say what that would be. To take my kids golfing, mini golfing?
What else is there, I mean, there's, there's really nothing else we could give them.
You know what's?
Yeah, I don't, you know, the only thing you can do when they have the pancake deal is, you know, if you buy two tickets for five dollars, please give them a twen- what, you know, that's something like.
Make it a.
If more people would do that, they would.
Make it a one-time use.
Yeah, well, that's, I guess I'd suggest that you gotta limit it somehow, and whatever, whatever the number's gonna be. Whether it's one, two, three, you know, whatever it is, but.
Just one time, 'cause the next, the next place is gonna come back again to bother them.
Well, of course, the point, the card company has whatever the percentage the card company gets, you know, that's their, that's their business, but.
Yeah, but then the donation goes back to the area Cub Scouts, I guess, guess we should look at that, because it's like buying Girl Scout cookies.
See, the Girl Scouts, when they sell them cookies, I always just tried to give them five or ten dollars and tell them, I don't want no cookies, but they don't understand that, see.
Sure.
They only get a dollar of this, you know, just that, you know, if they would understand that, then, you know, you could, you better off to give a donation than you buy the cookies.
Just, just knowing if we do this, there'll be a church coming up and want the same thing, so.
I, I agree with that. You know, let's check in to make sure that the money does stay in our local Cub Scout organization.
Well, we got a motion on the floor.
Second.
And the motion is to?
To participate, um, free kid with, uh, paid, paid adult, one-time use.
We'll call.
Okay, um, yeah, Reese. Cleveland. Woltman.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Hus.
Yes.
Good, just a couple other things, um, we, we have our draft of our goose management plan ready to go. The DNR is still look, looking into some of the legalities of, about basically ever enforcing city regulations on the water, that's that general issue. Um, so I don't, have not heard back from them yet on this. My, my point is that I sure would like for us to start our geese harassment sometime.
I'd be more than happy to take my dogs, you know, they might catch some, a few of those little ones, is that illegal?
No, that, yeah.
As long as they eat them.
That's the one, that's nature, that's nature.
I, we, we will propose that, uh, camp staff and parks workers are encouraged to disperse the geese using golf cart mowers, any other machinery, or making noise such as clapping.
So Ruth will love that part.
Dogs can chase those little ones. I don't wanna be cruel or nothing, but.
Can they, you know, it's, there's no.
No law against it.
That's where you clap, right?
There's nothing that would allow, allow for that.
Isn't there a shell, we're gonna buy them?
Well, that's, that's what I'm ultimately gonna get to.
Oh, yeah, okay.
In case the clapping gets too loud.
Here's, here's the main thing, city should use cracker shot to harass the geese. Uh, these would be used by the police department and the campground staff, campground manager is responsible for firing the cracker shots as needed on a consistent basis several times a day.
Well, make sure it's not after midnight.
Can you imagine taking an afternoon nap down there? Bam!
I guess that's, that's.
One o'clock. Bam, that's two o'clock.
Sounds to me like they're trying to save the geese.
Sounds like a boat backfiring.
They need to catch the little ones now and get rid of them.
Of course, they won't do that.
And then eat them. They say that ain't gonna happen. Well, doing nothing at all. Little geese are ready to be big. I know, they need to catch them with a dip net and a boat out there. Put them in a cage, feed them, and then when they get big enough, we'll have a feed.
Is that all we got on the goose?
No, the, the real question for you is, um, estimated cost on buying those guns and a thousand rounds of cracker shot, six hundred bucks. And we'd like to proceed and do that right away, be, even though we haven't.
They want us to buy that, right?
It'd be our, yeah, it'd be our staff, staff doing it.
Yeah, 'cause we want the geese to go.
I think we oughta give them bird flu and euthanize them.
Yeah.
Then we gotta buy.
It, well, no.
Those shells wouldn't ruin the barrel, would they?
Blanks?
No, with these cracker shells or whatever.
You get, you get a special gun to fire them. Anyway, to, like I said, total cost on that's six hundred bucks.
It don't work, they can get used to that.
It's not, it's not automatic, this is, you give Ruth a gun.
We got a fox, they, Lon put a fox out with the, that moves in the wind. Yep, that lasted two days, and then they were up there right by it.
Well, didn't, didn't the guy when he was here say that after a while, they'll get used to that shot?
Oh, yeah.
That's why you should just buy some blanks and be done with it. 'Cause that gun, you, you know what's gonna work? Shoot them and kill them.
Yep, right.
This fall, you'll kill them, and that'll be the start of your deal.
That's right.
Because if you go out to the marsh where we, we always used to duck hunt, after the first day, the next day you only shoot half a many shots, the third day you only shoot one shot, they're gone.
Yeah, they're smart enough to go.
Shot at with that stuff, 'cause they, oh, my buddy ain't coming back. They get the message real quick.
That, that of course is all part of our plan too, you know, for.
But you can't shoot them now.
No, only during. Only during season, that's why, say, if, if, we, we can harass them now, but you can't shoot them.
Let's buy some blanks, I got a shotgun they can use.
You will attend to that then?
Yeah, instead of buying a six hundred dollar gun, if we're not gonna kill them.
This would be two guns and a thousand rounds for six hundred bucks.
Let's buy some blanks, I got a shotgun they can use.
Something that Ruth or whomever can use, but.
Well, if it's a blanks, I'm not gonna tip her over.
She, she'd pull it up some camper.
Hey, we're never joking about giving Ruth a gun.
And my dogs would be happy just to go down and chase them.
Yeah, we'd like that.
Somebody have, having a gun, and they shoot that something, somebody might get shot down there.
You dang right.
It's like that, people are packing guns anymore.
Yeah, these cracker things, they're plastic, you know.
Yeah, so are they gonna shoot right into the lake?
They, they go fifty feet and then, and then crack.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, that's what they're designed to be, you know.
Why not just shoot them this fall?
'Cause you wanna do something now, I guess that's my point, is that we start something now.
Crapping on the sidewalks already.
I tie my dog up, out by the, where they were.
That keeps him out, Dave won't let us leave his dogs tied up all day.
I'll make a point, and, and this is the ones that are down by the lake.
Yeah, between the stone piers, you know, especially.
I'll make a point to go take them for a walk, you know, with their collars on, so if they get too close to the little ones, they don't eat them.
Why, why not have I eat them?
That could, that could happen, that'd be fine.
Better to ask for forgiveness than permission.
Let's try the dogs before we buy six hundred dollars worth of them.
I mean, they, they'd be more than happy to do that.
Yeah, they'd enjoy that, let's do the dogs, check it out.
I got one other thing that, are you done there, Scott, or, but that?
Just that we'll still work on some, some nuisances. Um, there's a couple of them that'll happen here pretty quick, if Larry Rick still has his tires down there. And Joe Blue had a truck parked in his front yard, and that's coming up. And, uh,
It's gonna go.
The once more guy, the, the, uh, fire inspector's coming back on the eleventh.
Well, that's gonna be a busy day.
For a re-inspection there.
This guy behind the Dodge garage there, did you have me, want him to?
He, he filled out a concrete permit, you, I want you to take a look at that, baby.
That ain't gonna work, but I told him, I said, you know.
That's why I, he felt, I wanted him to fill out a permit and you'd take a look at it, so.
I did, I mean, I guess how it looks don't matter, but I mean, he's within his rights to do what he's doing, but it's gonna look pretty stupid back there.
Did he get rid of that red ambulance with no license plate?
It's cleaned up back there for the moment, yeah.
But there is a storm drain in the, in the alley, I don't know whose it is, is it his or whose is it?
He was commenting about some intake there by the corner of the building, that.
There's an intake there, and then it goes over to a drain by the alley, right in the middle of the alley. I don't know whose it is, if it's city's or, there is a sewer that goes up that street, that alley, but that storm drain, it needs to be dug out if it's ours, 'cause it's a beehive, and you can only see about one inch of it. But everybody, you know, this, the, you know, getting back to you, Terry, last week, you know, everybody walked foot gravel in my alley. You can't just keep doing that, because, you know, it just keeps getting higher and higher and higher, and, and just like this storm drain, I don't know whose it is, but there's, it's a foot below the alley.
If we get the alley's too high then to get water in people's basements, so.
Well, yeah.
You just gotta grate them.
Yeah.
It's too wet this spring.
Are we putting any streets in this year?
No, no streets.
No streets this year.
Next year.
Propose a bigger project next year.
What is that, I see you must have some, uh, looks like wax or something, or?
Down here.
Yeah, I've seen it somewhere.
Vine Street.
Yeah.
Does that work?
No.
No, it's coming loose.
Test patch, and it's been in two years.
Two years, maybe, no.
And I noticed it today when I was taking Luke back from Fort Smith that we need to peel it out of there before somebody catches it, 'cause it's sticking up about that far now, I see, it didn't stick.
Well, that, that alley is where the water was running down, is there something we could put on there to make a hump there so the water don't?
This is up by the school?
No, this is down Lakewood Drive, or not Lakewood Drive.
Lake Shore Drive.
Lake Shore Drive?
Lake Shore Drive.
Darlene Onkins.
Yeah.
Sterling Church, it goes in their basement, their garages.
I see that hump there, yeah, I go through there once every day.
But that, we're gonna leave that for next year when we get the street.
I, yeah, wasn't that gonna be part of the street project made next year? I think.
I mean, just for now, is there something we could put up there so that water don't come off that Lake Street and come down in there?
Are you saying we should do it at Lake Street, put something there?
Yeah, or, you know, if that water comes down off of Lake Street and comes down that way. I didn't know if there was something.
A speedboat, put a speedboat pump, that divert the water.
You know.
Maybe put some cold mix or something in there to.
I don't think it's taking too much, but.
I'll take a look at it and then visit, I mean, I, I'm not sure what you're talking about, I kind of think I know, but I'll let you hear it.
Alright.
Terry, you have one more thing?
Yeah, that, uh, this isn't real serious, I don't think, but them, uh, when it was, uh, the weather was so bad Saturday, they, they said, them ladies and several people said, well, how come we don't have a cover on this? On the farmer's market, in the first place, if you look at it with that arch up there, it wouldn't look too cool. You know, it would, sure, it would be nice, but, you know, it isn't, uh, I told them I didn't think, uh, it would probably happen, you know, I, I,
You know, actually, we, we have discussed that before and.
I know.
And decided against doing anything, they're even discussed like sunshades or the, something in the shape of a sail, you know, or something like that, we've had some different options there.
Yeah, it's, uh, you know, sometime, you know, maybe in the, I told them I didn't think we probably wasn't gonna spend any money, you know, right now for this, you know, but, uh.
You know, do something that looks right with it too.
Well, sure, that's right.
I don't know what that is.
I know, because I was looking at it after several people mentioned this, you know, and got that big arch up in front there, you know, it'd be hard to, you know, what are you gonna build around that, uh, make that look good.
The fees for us letting them do that would be really high if we put a roof on there.
A fee? You have a fee?
Well, there would be a fee if we put a roof on it.
Never mind, never mind.
Oh, I don't, I mean, that, that don't bother me, but I mean, I just.
I'll see if Lon can fit that in this year.
Not this year, nothing more.
I'll tell them Lon's busy.
He's busy.
So.
Motion to adjourn?
You gotta, you gotta talk about this tree in the lake or whatever.
Oh, oh, excuse me, thank you, yeah, 'cause just, it, you know, I just gave you those photos. Um, really just to let you know what was going on out there, and just a little discussion about where this is right now. This is at, uh, Jim Dowling's, I talked with Jim, and, you know, they just have every intention, they will start whittling away at the tree, and they will take, they will take it out of there. You know, they aren't asking for anything. This is at Crescent Park, where this area between, between the sidewalk and the, the high water mark there is defined only as public land, and this is, both the state and the city have agreed that, uh, we wouldn't really even try to define ownership of it over the course of the years, it's just public. And then we have this, uh, dock management agreement with the, with the state, we manage docks in that area. Okay, but, uh, that is basically only the management of the docks, all of the maintenance of, of the, the area, all lawn mowing, anything like that, any of the improvements on the shoreline, that goes to the homeowner. Okay, the city has, has been responsible before for tree removal, in, in certain instances where the trees were needing to be removed for safety reasons. And that's kinda where we've always drawn the line, if somebody wants something done to a tree out there for their own personal or aesthetic reasons, that's always been a private responsibility, if it truly is a safety reason, then we would take care of it. And boy, we've taken care of something maybe a time or two, it just doesn't happen very often.
Back when I worked for Iowa State Conservation, we took the trees out. Oh, God, we, I think we went down there Welch's all along there, that Dutch elm disease hit.
Yeah.
And, uh, the state said it was theirs, or ours, and the city said it was theirs, and so we both worked together and took them out and got rid of them. I think anytime you have a cottonwood tree, it's a safety issue.
Correct. Well, anything down there in that soft soil, you know, there's a lot of them sticking out.
No root mass 'cause of water.
Jim had also said, uh, that he intends to remove that other big tree.
Well, yeah, I would, you know.
Just, you know, they were basically growing up together, so this would just be the other one we'd go to, so. As far as defining, you know, property ownership in that area and defining responsibility for a lot of this stuff, like I said, we've never really hashed that out as far as, as who owns it and who's responsible for what. In this case, I think the city's position on this, uh, is that, you know, any, any tree falling over like that, we're not negligent in any regard. It's just an act of. In this case, I think the city's position on this is that, you know, any, any tree falling over like that, we're not negligent in any regard. It's just an act of God. It's covered with private, it's a private issue. 'Cause I think about, say, Bob Meyer's tree down on, on Blossom Street, a couple of years ago, fell into his house. Okay? Just an act of God. It was private insurance on that. I think we took that out, but, but any damage to its home is private. Just FYI more than anything.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
I'll second.
End of adjourn.